Okay, and I'd like to open our meeting, and as we always do, pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Priority Carol, and very often we let Commissioner Vigliotti go last, but can you go first?
I'm happy to go first, Commissioner, thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. So I will, a couple things on the list this morning, I'll try to move through them relatively quickly. So this past Friday, I had the privilege to join Carroll County's Celebrating America as they met at and toured the Tawny Town History Museum. For those of you who may not know, Celebrating America is composed of wonderful people from different groups, organizations, and entities devoted to preserving, advocating for, and promoting American and Carroll County's history. And among those who participate in Celebrating America is Vivian Daly, who works here in the Commissioner's office, and I wanted to thank her for her service in that group and to offer credit where it is due. This week, I also had the privilege of attending the Commission on Aging and Disabilities, which is also a wonderful group of people dedicated to ensuring that our elderly and disabled residents have information services and opportunities to be a part of our whole community. So what was interesting about this virtual meeting is that I had a surprise special guest, and that was my dog Frankie. He made a guest appearance during the meeting, if you can see in the upper left-hand corner there. He's going to be 12 years old next month, there he is, there's Frankie. So he's going to be 12 years old next month, and so he had quite a vested interest in seeing what the Commission on Aging and Disabilities was up to. Now, on that note, flu shots are going to be offered throughout the county this week at our senior center. This coming week, we threat the county at our senior centers. On Monday, October 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Mount Airy Senior Center, on Tuesday, October 3rd, at the North Carroll Senior Center, on Wednesday, October 4th, at South Carroll Senior Center, on Thursday, October 5th, at the Tawny Town Senior Center, and on Friday, October 6th, at the Westminster Senior Center. And more information about that can be found on the county's website. In District 1, there are a lot of exciting events that are coming up. Tawny Town has its annual Harvest Fest coming up this Saturday, September 30th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Tawny Town Memorial Park. Admission is free, and there are going to be pony rides, a petting zoo, games, bounce houses, a straw maze, hayrides, and live music by the Twisted Blues Band. There are also going to be many food and craft vendors as well. In Union Bridge, on October 1st, the Union Bridge Fire Company Ladies Auxiliary will be holding their apple dumpling sale at the Fire Hall, featuring baked, unbaked, and sugar-free apple dumplings. And on October 6th, the Union Bridge Lions Club will be holding their Polish Pottery Bingo at the New Windsor Fire Hall. Now, over, excuse me, over New Windsor, on Saturday, October 7th, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., will be the annual Music on the Main event. There are going to be all kinds of activities and fun things to do, including face painting for kids in a bounce house, and there are going to be all kinds of craft and food vendors as well. I've been to a bunch of these events over the years, and they're all very much worth attending, and I hope that I'll see some of you out and about. And Commissioner, that's all for me this morning, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garen?
Oh, thank you. Good morning, Carroll County. I'm like Commissioner Vigliotti, I'm going to keep it a little light this morning as well, I want to get to a couple items. A couple really interesting events coming up in Carroll County. Of course, it is probably the most wonderful time of year in this county with the foliage and the weather, so you've got a couple events coming up in October. Harrison Mule Days, for people who live in the southern part of the county and are familiar with the Carroll Equestrian Center, that's going to be, Harrison Mule Days will be taking place again on October 6th, 7th, and 8th. I would encourage you to go to that event, it is fascinating to see. Again, I've already proclaimed here in front of the entire county, I'm not a horse person or a mule person, but it is just, I'm just fascinated by what you see there. It is a great kids' event as well, it is not just an adults' event, it is a children's event, so please support our Carroll Equestrian Center down there in the southern part of the county, in my district, and show up for Harrison Mule Days. There's some competition on that day as well, though. Our Rotary Clubs of Carroll County are going to be operating, going to be conducting their 10th Annual Oktoberfest on the 7th and 8th of October as well, and that's going to be at the Carroll County Ag Center, so I want people to be aware of that as well. And it's a conflicting date, but Mount Airy also, because of the weather, moved their Oktoberfest from September 23rd, which was last weekend, to October 7th. So you've got plenty of choices that weekend of things to do. Get out there and support your local vendors and your civic groups, and come to some of these events, Carroll County, because they are, they are really a good time. And again, it's for a good cause. And that is it for me this morning.
Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you. Over the past few days, I've attended a couple different events. We'll start with, last Thursday was the Westminster Fall Fest event. I was able to be a part of that, as I have for a number of years, and assisted in handing out 3,000 small pumpkins, was assisting local homestead products out of Marston, always fun to do so, and very appreciated by the community. Unfortunately, Fall Fest, as all of us know, we sort of got monsoon season this last week, so unfortunately, outside of Thursday and Friday of that event, the weekend was pretty much rained out. Another issue, another thing, topic I wanted to mention, though, it's rather important, and definitely important for a lot of our local businesses, was the Carroll County Times' Carol's Best Winners Awards that just came out, and congratulations to those who were both mentioned as either winners and/or honorable mention. Definitely takes a lot of folks in our community to make who we are, who we are, and, you know, it was great to see not only some of those that won, but also some that, you know, just barely fell short, that are happy to be honorable mentions and looking to up their game, so to speak, for next year. Another topic I did want to mention very briefly, the State's Attorney's Office issued a press release the other day regarding that they are announcing the collection of supplies for bolt bags for survivors of domestic abuse in connection with Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. This is an opportunity for the public to assist with a variety of items, be it first-aid kits, hygiene products, toiletries, and that these items will go to help those that are in need of these types of products and dealing with domestic violence. The bags will be distributed by Springboard Community Services and are provided through the generosity of both Terry's Tag and Title, and the locations will be, principal locations in Westminster will be that, but also they'll be available in Eldersburg, Tawny Town, Owens Mills, and Columbia. There will be additional information regarding this on both the State's Attorney's website and social media, as well as, I believe, it is on mine and a few other places as well. But definitely a good, good opportunity to reach out and support those in our community that definitely need assistance. On this past Sunday evening, I attended the 2023 Gold Star Luminary Event at Bridging Life. Definitely a very moving event to attend. The event was in honor of Gold Star families and their loved ones killed in action. Also honored were veterans and first responders who have passed, there were more than 200 luminaries that were placed around the building. A friend of mine, Allison Machowski, U.S. Marine Corps veteran and mother of her son, who was Marine Staff Sergeant, Sergeant Jimmy Malachowski, who was killed in Afghanistan in 2011, she was the featured speaker. Just very heartfelt event, and I would say to anyone, this event is consistently growing, feel free to attend and be involved in this, and it's always very important to remember those who've paid the ultimate sacrifice for us, and we have to remember them and their families who are grieving their loss. And that's all I have this morning, thank you.
Commissioner Rothstein?
Okay, good morning. I think you could hear me, okay?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yep, all good.
Okay, so, a couple things, I am recovering from a hip replacement, and I'll tell you, if anybody is questioning on getting it done, get it done, it's pretty amazing, and look forward to being back in the office next week. A couple of activities happening in the near future, I'll be attending a conference out in Minneapolis with the Baltimore Metropolitan Committee with Ms. Deb Effingham, and the idea there is to work with other communities like Baltimore region and learn best practices and some of the challenges, and, you know, discuss opportunities to collaborate with. So the BMC has gone out to Detroit, Philadelphia, this year it's Minneapolis, and we also reciprocate with those other communities that want to come see Baltimore, and what Baltimore does have to offer, and it does have a lot to offer. A couple things, unfortunately, that continue to plague Baltimore and the region is the violence, and honestly, a friend, a colleague of mine was just recently murdered, she was an entrepreneur, and fortunately, they apprehended the suspect that did this to her, and I think it happened a few days back, but, you know, let her memories, you know, always be a lesson to her colleagues, her friends, her family. She was 25 years old and way too young. And then another unfortunate incident is a friend of mine, also a businessman, 45 years old, died of a probable drug overdose, and whether it was, you know, something he wanted to do or not want to do, it's regardless. We've got to slow things down, and we just had a conversation on mental health last week. This is not a weekly, or monthly, or yearly event, it's got to be a 24/7, because there's too many really good people that are, you know, putting themselves in harm's way. And to me, if you see something, say something, do something. Commissioner Garen continues to share the 988, Commissioner Kyler continues to share the opioid task force, these are tools to use, and let's continue to remind ourselves that we shouldn't be innocent bystanders, because there's nothing innocent about it when things like this happen. I don't want to be such a Debbie Downer on all of this, but those are the things that are honestly on my mind, and look forward to getting this open session started, so thank you.
Thank you, and I'll try to be quick. I do want to start by, I had it as my last comment, but piggybacking what he just said, I think we've all talked up here and pushed things about suicide, opioid abuse, et cetera, et cetera. Not so much that we get criticized, but it seems like everybody wants to whine today. Just because we don't mention something doesn't mean we're excluding it, doesn't mean we don't care about it, and it seems like we get a lot of things, well, you talked about this, this, and this, but what about this? You don't care about that? Well, yes, we, we care about suicides, I don't care what the reason was, we care about them, and I think, and thanks Commissioner Rothstein for bringing that up, and like you say, we could talk about it every week, and we're still not talking about it enough. Back to my list, tonight I'm going to dinner with the Carroll Realtors as they install their officers, and a great group, and we need to get the market better, we need to have some more houses on the market, and some starter homes for kids, et cetera, and I've said it hopefully every week, I love Carroll County, but we need to make sure we keep some of our young people here, and right now, we're not, and we can't assume they're going to go to another state and then return later. We may lose them, and we need good citizens here, so, again, I'm looking forward to that tonight. Did my podcast last week, and I did it with Rick Baker, and so please, if you get a chance, listen to the podcast, it's not just going to be me, my monotone for 10 or 15 minutes, half of it will be Rick's, and I invite anybody that wants to come forward to join me in my podcast, which is, I guess, every five weeks. Commissioner Vigliotti and I visited New Windsor Fire Department, that was a great visit, and we got to see some of their history, and some of their volunteers, and some of the things they do, we got to see their, their different vehicles and their plans moving forward, and it was just an awesome visit, and I'm glad, I don't know if you set that up, or how it got set up, but I'm really glad it happened, and anybody, and I'm sure any of our volunteer fire departments would, would love to give you a tour of their facility, and it's, it's pretty awesome, and we got to see how they do fundraisers, and one of the things we talked about, yes, we're making great strides with EMS and Fire, and the county is diving into it, but that doesn't mean these volunteer fire departments don't spend a lot of money on their own and need a lot of fundraising and donations, so don't, don't forget them. Speaking of that, we're looking at the budget almost weekly, and the more we look, the more there is to talk about, but, and it's, that's what we're doing. Yesterday, I went down to Taws, Crab Feet, and Chrisfield, and got to see a lot of people from across the state, and I won't mention people, because again, I'll exclude somebody, but it's just great to see people from all over the state doing what we're doing, and some of the organizations, I saw Mako had a table, and different entities had tents, and you could walk around, it was, it was a great day. They used to do it in the summer, and it could be 100 degrees, it's a little nicer when they do it in the fall. My last thing, and I was, I don't, I don't know if I should open with this, but in case people think my filter is too restrictive and I can't be blunt, I fully support what CCPS is doing with books, how they set up a committee, how they're doing it, and I don't know how to say it more bluntly. If you say they are banning books, you are frickin' lying, and I don't know how else to say it. It's not, I chose that word because, or whatever, they aren't banning anything, and they're doing what they feels best for our students, and I appreciate it. And that's enough of me. Now, we have a few retirements, and if you can start, and when, when each Commissioner starts with your name, if you're here, or supervisor's here, come up and grab a seat and join us.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Kyler. First up, we have Ricky A. Wetzel.
Good morning, and thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
In recognition of 42 years of excellent service to Carroll County government, you've exemplified the highest standard of skillfully performing the duties of the positions held over these many years, from roads maintenance worker to equipment operator. Your unwavering reliability demonstrated daily and during catastrophic weather events have made a difference to those residing in the areas in which you work. For your dedication to Carroll County government, we wholeheartedly thank you and wish you a long and healthy retirement. God bless you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything you'd like to say, or anything you'd like to?
It's been an adventure, yeah. A lot of things has changed, some for the good, some for the bad. I'm just, if I wouldn't have to come in for a snow removal, I'd be put in a couple more years.
We promise you there's no more snow.
Yeah, it takes a special breed to be out there during late hours, and put in the hours and days at times, and I think it takes a certain person to keep doing that, and my hat's off to the guys and the gals who do it. It's come a long ways from their equipment, you know, for the better, of course, which is not as stressful on the operators, and that does help out, and they're doing more and more every year to make it easier for them, but pushing snow is still pushing snow. And I've had, I guess I've been in five or six blizzards since I've been here, and it gets tough, it gets tough. But overall, the people I've met and the friends I've made here has been really nice. So, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best to try my retirement and enjoy it.
Well, thank you very much for everything that you have done for us, and God bless you, and I think, I think it's important, too, to note that, you know, not everybody always sees the plows out, for example, during a snowstorm, but everybody relies on them, and then so, you know, just because you aren't seen doesn't mean that you aren't valuable, and I really cannot thank you enough for what you've done for us for the last 30 years, and God bless you and your family and everyone.
Thank you very much.
And it probably adds to the stress, people are getting more and more demanding, but I think they do very much appreciate it.
No, I would agree, I appreciate your service and everything, and like Commissioner Vigliotti said, just because the public may not be aware of everything that goes on sometimes, you know, we have our, I guess I'll say silent heroes, in a sense, you know, you are the folks that keep us operating, and it's greatly appreciated by everyone, even if they don't recognize that on a consistent basis, thank you.
Yeah, ditto, again, thank you for your service to the county, and congratulations.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Rothstein, maybe you want to add something, and then we're going to do a photo without you.
I think doing a photo without me is the best thing, since I have a page for radio, but I always appreciate the work you and your colleagues do. You're always at the ready, whether it's a 2 o'clock start, or 4 o'clock start, whatever it may, may end up being, and you're definitely a testament to getting the job done, not by looking at your watch, but by making sure that those roads are safe for our community at any given time, so just thank you very much for you and, and all of your colleagues and team for what they've done for our community, so thanks, and best of, best of luck in all your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Okay, we want to do a photo?
So try not to, try not to break too many cameras.
Mr. Gordon?
Thank you. So, keeping with the note of certificate of recognition this morning, could we have Bobby L. Yingling, please, come forward?
Thank you, sir. In recognition of over 18 years of exemplary service to Carroll County government, you exemplify the highest standard of skillful performing, skillfully performing the duties of the positions held over the years, from road equipment operator to truck driver. The reliability demonstrates, demonstrated in your work, in your daily work ethic are to be recommended. We wholeheartedly thank you for your dedication to Carroll County government and the residents you proudly serve, with great appreciation, signed the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Want to give you an opportunity to speak, sir, if you had anything you wanted to mention, or?
No, well, it's been fun, if it wouldn't be fun, the circumstances might not have stayed, and Jim, he is a great leader.
Thank you.
Well, sir, I, I think I can easily share this, and I think my colleagues will all agree, we greatly appreciate all you've done in your 18 years of service to Carroll County, not only Carroll County government, but to citizens of Carroll County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, again, it's one of those, those jobs that often goes unsung, but certainly don't go unrecognized, so thank you very much, and God bless you and everything in your future.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rothstein, anything?
Nope, just again, thank you for all you've done for our community, and best of luck.
And thank you.
Okay, photo time.
And we can share the pictures with you as well.
If you don't mind. Commissioner Garen?
I'd like to say, I'd like to speak a couple words here, please. The two guys that are just retiring are some of the hardest working guys on the roads department. Never a moment trouble with any of them, they've always done whatever has been asked of them, gone and above and beyond some of the days, you know, exhaustion, whatever, sets in, if they need to go out again, they do it, never, never a question asked, they always stood up and took, you know, control of the situations, couldn't ask for two better That being said, I just want to recognize one other person who was not able to attend. One of our office associates had over 30-some years of service with us, so she had some health issues and decided to step down, so Debbie Green was with us for over 30-some years, 33, almost 33 years, so I just want to give her a little shout out.
And, yeah, Commissioner Garen's gonna say something about that, and if you can get
the certificate to her.
Okay. I'm glad, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I, Deborah is not here this morning, I want people to be aware of that, but in reading this, it's, and what you said, which was much better than what I'm going to say, was that people in the county, on the staff, know that Deborah, after 32 years, is retiring, and that's what, people need to know that, so thank you, those are real kind words, so I'm going to make it official, but I think your words really are far more valuable. But this is a certificate of recognition for Deborah Green, and as you mentioned, it's in recognition of over 32 years of exemplary service to Carroll County government. She displayed the highest standard of accuracy and reliability in performing her job duties over those many years, and her dependability and collaborative work ethic are to be commended. We wholeheartedly thank her for her dedication to Carroll County government and the residents she proudly served, and as you mentioned, she served in DPW, I guess Roads, and the off, she was an office tech, I think, to be.
Yes, she was.
But, yeah, recognizing people is probably the most important thing we can do, and we all can do together, so I appreciate your words, and congratulations, Deborah, hopefully she's watching, but if she's not watching, I'm sure she's getting a bunch of phone calls right now.
She will, she will.
We'll definitely let her know.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
And I think your point was so well made about the employees and how valuable they are, and I can remember over the years, people don't always appreciate, and you guys said it well, snow, other emergencies, they don't take off the holidays, and I can remember, I'm sure your people are the same way, I would get calls on December 31st, it looks like it's going to snow, are you going to call me? I've been invited to a party, but if you're going to call me, I'm staying home and waiting for that, and that's awesome, you know, the guys you deal with, it's, they're awesome.
And I know that, I know both of those guys have worked Christmas Eve and New Year's, even though they had families, they still came in and put the time in.
And Deborah, if you're listening, God bless you, and thank you for everything you've done, and God bless you in all of your future endeavors.
Because the office technicians are there when the general are out, or lanes are out on the roads.
And they deal with all the phone calls, all the, all the angry citizens out there that give them, give them the dickens, so.
Put together those road closure notices that we all get, and, yeah, so.
And they hold, they hold firm and answer all the questions, so they're, it's a valuable part of the team.
Part of the team.
It is, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, lastly, under priority Carol, Commissioner Gordon's going to talk about Cyber Security Month.
Do we want to have them come up first, or?
Good morning to both of you.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, so proclamation, Cyber Security Awareness Month, October 23, whereas the Carroll, Carroll County recognizes that it is, it has a vital role in identifying, protecting, and resupplanting. protecting and responding to cyber threats that may have significant impact on our individual or collective security and privacy. And critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly relevant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare and emergency response systems. And the quote, "Staying safe online is easy" end quote campaign is designed as the Know Before Awareness Campaign used by private companies, nonprofit and government organizations, as well as academic institutions working together to increase the understanding of cyber threats and empowering the American public to be safer and more secure online. And the National Institute of Standards and Technology Cybersecurity Framework has been developed as a free resource to help organizations improve their cybersecurity practices through a practical approach to addressing involving threats and challenges. And maintaining the security of cyberspace is a shared responsibility to which each of us has a critical role to play. And awareness of computer security essentials will improve the security of Carroll County's information, infrastructure and economy. And the federal government of the United States of America, the United States Department of Homeland Security and the National Cybersecurity Alliance all recognize October as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month. Now therefore, we, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October as Cybersecurity Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to visit the Know Before website and to learn about cybersecurity and to put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces and businesses adopted this 28th day of September 2023, the Board of Carroll County Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners. Bobby's gonna give you just a couple of quick facts on how we're doing with cybersecurity here in the county. I think he'll be pretty happy with what she has to present.
So, excuse me, our employees do an excellent job of being careful and, you know, watching their emails and not clicking on things. We currently, let's see, our risk score is currently at 19.7, which, there's like a little graph, we are in the green, so that's really good. And then based on our phishing security tests, we, our account average is 2.4% fish prone and the industry average for our size government is 16%. So we're at 2.4. So we are doing really well. So thanks to our employees for their vigilance.
Yes, Commissioners, and, and as you said, and Bobby stated here, while it's technology services who puts the hardware and the software into place to help protect us, it really is the entire county and the front line with all of the employees doing the things that they should and people sending us emails when they don't look like they're right and they want us to take a look at them or calling us up when they have questions about stuff has really helped us over the last several years to get to this type of posture that we have now. As you know, nothing's 100%, but the lower we keep that risk, the less chance we'll have of being attacked.
And I think, I certainly think it's something to be said for the training that all of us go through, including the Board of Commissioners, about what does and doesn't look suspicious. And, and I know that there have been one or two emails where going through that training has helped me to reconsider what it was that I was looking at or what I was going to follow. Fortunately, both of those times, they turned out to be good links, they've turned out to be good attachments, but, but it's still important to have that healthy sense of caution about clicking on anything. And so I thank you guys for instilling that and making sure that was something that everybody has to do.
And, and I think it's interesting, the quote, "Staying safe online is easy." I'm not sure that's, it's doable, but I don't know that it's easy, so thank you.
No, and I appreciate all the hard work of you and your department and, you know, echoing my other Commissioners' comments, it truly is something that's become very, very significant in our lives. You know, 30 years ago, nobody would have expected the significance of what we deal with technology-wise today. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, you both. Appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna do a photo? Oh, Commissioner Rothstein, I'm sorry, I forgot you.
No, it's all good. Easy to forget. Just a couple of real quick things. To me, cybersecurity is not, you know, figuring out the big solution to a big problem. It's a, a whole bunch of little solutions and, you know, the attention to detail for everybody that's touching a phone or a computer and just, you know, taking the extra precautionary step will save a lot of time, a lot of effort. You know, it's, it's not like you open something and all of a sudden it's a, the gateway is to hell. It's open something and it'll tunnel through many different directions to then get to those gateways. So we've got to be as precautionary as possible. And then the other is, anybody who says that they're a cybersecurity expert, I'm very wary of. There's a lot of tools out there to do, but the best tool possible is honestly between the two ears and that's using our brain and taking the steps necessary. And I appreciate, you know, Mark and your entire team giving us those tools, you know, to use and keep us tracking with the Know Before programs. They're very valuable and if you're not taking them, then, you know, it's incumbent on us to, to do it. So I appreciate that.
And Mark, I should verify real quick, before I clicked on anything, I made sure of what it was before I clicked on it. I didn't want you to think what I said fortunately after I clicked. I wanted to make sure I wasn't scaring you.
And Commissioners, if I could just really quickly, other than just proclaiming this Cybersecurity Month, IT is going to be doing a whole month's worth of activities for employees. Bobby will be sending out an email today letting them know what's going on. For people who actively participate, there'll be some prizes at the end of the month that they'll be entered to win. So we're gonna do a lot of fun stuff and hopefully everybody will enjoy what we send out to them this month. Move forward.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
equipment for sheriff's office vehicles.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office is requesting your approval to award the purchase of additional body worn in-car cameras and related equipment to Motorola Solutions Incorporated at a cost of $56,904.60. This purchase includes the hardware, the software, licensing, training, installation and the service maintenance for five years. Motorola Solutions was awarded a competitively bid contract by the Virginia IT Agency and Carroll County will be piggybacking this contract. Funding is already approved through the grants awarded to the county and no additional fund should be necessary. And I'll turn it over to these gentlemen to tell you about the cameras.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm Captain to board from the sheriff's office. Seat to my left is my colleague, Captain Day.
Morning.
So the, the funds that we have requested via the grants are going to outfit our specialized units and our specialized vehicles in the fleet, which currently it's non-existent in the, the equipment. It's gonna be the Sprinter van that our SWAT team utilizes, as well as the armored personnel carrier and the crisis negotiation van, which we're currently using. We intend, or we're intending on using the funds also to put additional dock stations over in the courthouse. So the de, the courthouse deputies have the ability to download their data from their actual office instead of having to come over to headquarters to download the data. We're on track right now. This is basically what I would refer to as phase two of the operation. In phase one, we purchased all the body worn cameras, as well as the in-car camera systems for all our fleet, our entire fleet minus these additional vehicles. Were slated, the bill that went into effect last year requires that we have everyone outfitted with body worn cameras, as well as in-car systems by July of 2025. We'll most likely have the entire fleet and our officers up and running by mid-October or later in November. So we're well ahead of schedule by the Maryland legislation.
Motion to award the purchase of body worn and in-car cameras and related equipment to Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the total amount of $56,904.60.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion and questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Item two.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Very much. And thank you for being so far ahead of schedule. That's great.
It's, it's been a great undertaking, but, you know, if we didn't have the staff in place to take these, these steps, we'd be, we'd be sitting in the dust right now, so. But thank you for your support as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, item two, grant approval to submit the FY23 Connected Devices Program Grant application and accept the award. And we get to see you again.
I was gonna say, he looks kind of familiar. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
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 The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with Technology Services requests your approval to migrate the Laserfish data to the managed.
No, that's not it.
That's not it.
No, that, I don't think this one's me.
No, I don't think it is you.
I was gonna say, wait a minute. I'm so sorry.
No worries.
I'll be back later.
No worries at all. No worries.
We'll be ready for you.
Corey Harding, chair from the grants office, is gonna be joining us. There we go.
I was trying.
There we go. Go ahead, Jay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Back in the principal's office again. The state of Maryland has announced round two of the Maryland Connected Devices Program. The program provides HP Chromebooks to households with low income at or below 200% of the federal poverty guidelines. The Department of Technology Services is asking to, permission to apply for this application and accept the, the grant if awarded.
And just the reason, so that you understand why we're doing this, we're actually not going to be participating directly in the program, but the state of Maryland has required the counties to go out and work with the non-for-profits in the county. And as you can see in the briefing paper, there are a lot of organizations that have participated with us. At this point, we're looking at distributing thousands of Chromebooks as we go through the process. You can see that, that we estimate there's about 4,473 families in Carroll County who meet this requirement of 200% below the poverty level. So, and the Carroll Tech Council is actually going to be helping us with storage of the devices as they come in and as they go out. And we'll bring you updates in the future on what's been done and who's received them.
Motion to approve the submitting of the FY23 Connected Devices Program Grant Application and Accept the Award.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. The contract renewal for debt of migration, managed cloud platform, sorry, with annual support renewal. Well, hi.
Now that I've successfully made myself look like an idiot.
Not at all.
Try it again. Yeah. All right. The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with Technology Services requests your approval to migrate the Laserfish data and to the managed cloud platform in the amount of $37,518.75, along with the Laserfish annual support renewal in the amount of $75,350 for a total of $112,868.75 to MCI, which is a single source vendor.
Why don't you read the details?
Servers are at the end of life and need to be updated. The migration to the cloud platform will eliminate Windows server licensing certificates and end of life issues. Additionally, Laserfish repositories and backup storage are limited on premise. This will also reduce the nightly backup times for all other on premise storage. Laserfish cloud services would, would allow automatic updates of server operating systems and application updates and fixes without interruption to end users, which will benefit both the county and sheriff office users. With the county, with the county not having a dedicated Laserfish staff, this migration will eliminate the need to contract professional services to help with upgrades and updates. The annual Laserfish managed cloud protects documents and database storage on three servers, along with managed cloud protections storage.
So, and Commissioners, this is another one of those great things that when you think back to cybersecurity, this is another application that we now have out of house, off of our systems, so that if we were ever attacked, this would still be up and running out in the cloud. It is going to really resolve some huge storage issues that we're having right now. And over time, the more of these things we get out into the cloud, in the future, the less new servers and storage we're gonna have to buy as we move forward. It's gonna take a little bit of time to get there, but it's definitely part of the plan and the process that we have.
So over the course of time, we're looking at some kind of cost savings, I would guess.
That's correct, yeah. When, when the next time it comes to replace equipment, we'll probably be able to replace it with a lot less memory and storage than what we currently are. We'll never be able to completely eliminate it, but it'll definitely be reduced as part of our capital projects.
And this is all within the FY24 budget?
Yes, everything's in there. Yep.
Motion to approve the migration of the Laserfish data to the managed cloud platform in the amount of $37,518.75, along with the Laserfish annual support renewal in the amount of $75,350 for a total amount of $112,868.75 to MCCI.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. I am now leaving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item four, approval to award a contract for emergency repair to the Nature Center building because of tree damage.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Lisa, how are you today?
Doing well, how's everybody?
Doing well, thank you.
Wonderful.
The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Department of Recreation and Parks requests your approval to award Constant Needing Contracting Group LLC an emergency repair contract for the Pioneer Run Park Nature Center due to tree damage in the amount of $49,500. Four contractors were contacted to submit quotes and this purchase is within the fiscal year 24 budget and no additional fund should be required.
Any questions for me?
Well, more question, when, when it's emergency repair like this, is everyone you request for a bid already pre-qualified or are there different circumstances when it's like this?
On, on these quotes, these were actually quotes that Lisa requested from these vendors. So I guess that would definitely be targeted more towards her.
So we, we, they, the park operations staff went, went out and were requesting bids. Some of the ones that were requested were ones that we have history and have worked with before.
Okay. And the tree damage that we're talking about was from the storm?
So this, this was from the July 28th storm. It came, came through around eight o'clock PM. I, I live in the southern part of the county and it, I remember that. So unfortunately, it, it, a tree came down and hit the, the roof of the nature center. Luckily for us, there was not anybody in the area at the time.
And thank God for that. Motion to approve the emergency repair work at Pioneer Run Nature Center to Considine Contracting Group LLC in the amount of $49,500.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item five, exercise option to purchase approval to participate in the state program Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Program. And we have a few. We do.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. How's everybody this morning?
Doing well, how are you doing?
I'm all right, I'm all right. All right, good morning, Commissioners. I wanted to mention quickly that our total preserved acres at this point is 78,821. All right, good morning, Commissioners. I wanted to mention quickly that our total preserved acres at this point is 78,821 acres. That includes a farm that we settled just this week. Also wanted to mention that the Carroll County Land Trust is having their annual banquet meeting and dinner next week. So anyone that's received an invitation, we would appreciate an RSVP that was included in the invitation. And if there are any citizens that are interested in supporting the land trust, which also supports our program here at the county, you know, other people are welcome. They just need to contact our office and pay a small fee for the dinner that they assume as a donation. So, thank you very much. So today, we're here for approval of applications to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Qualifications for the MAF program include 50% Class 1, 2, and 3 soils. A farm needs to be at least 50 acres unless it's adjacent to an already preserved farm, and we have to have a minimum of one lot right to retire. All the farms are ranked using a land evaluation and site assessment scoring system. Actual appraisals will be used by the state to determine the value of the ag land, and the county is committed to a 40% cost share through an annual bond of $1.3 million. Today, with the applications we are presenting, it will total 688 acres. There are 16 farms in the application this year to the state. Four were critical farms and have already been, received approval from yourselves, and four did not receive offers from the last cycle. So they're reapplying and they are going forward with last year's approval. Today, we're seeking approval for eight farms, and the advisory board has already approved these farms June 14th, 2023. The first farm we have is Bill and Robin Cosden at 1315 Nailers Mill Road in Kmart, 12 acres, 81.8% qualifying soils, and retiring three lot rights. And this is in District 1. The farm can be seen here in the bottom left corner. It's filling in a little gap there. Includes an historic mill right on the Nailers Mill Road. And we will approve these as we go along.
Motion to grant final approval for the William Cosden III and Robin Cosden property to participate in the MAF program.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next farm we have is Benjamin and Gladys Rock located at 4020 Fringer Road in Tawnytown, 25 acres, 100% qualifying soils. We will be retiring five lot rights, and this is also in District 1. This is where the farm lays in relation to other preserved properties. And again, we're asking for approval.
Motion to grant final approval for the Benjamin and Gladys Rock property to participate in the MAF program.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have William and Kirk Shealy located at 3727 Carrollton Road in Upper Co., almost 28 acres, 86.8% qualifying soils, and we will be retiring two lot rights in District 2. This is where the farm lays in relationship to other preserved farms, and today we ask for final approval for the MAF program.
Go ahead. You're doing well.
Okay. Just wanted to make, I mean, just wanted to make sure that, you know. All right, I got, okay. Motion to grant final approval for the William and Kirk Shealy property to participate in the MAF program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have Richard and Elila Weaver, 3335 North Emery Road in Finksburg, 35.7 acres,
87.9% qualifying soils, with a total of lot, eight lot rights being retired, and this is also in District 2. Here's how this farm lays in relationship to other easements in the area, and Mr. Shealy is just right up here in the top corner, so we're building pretty well in this area. Today, we request final approval for this farm for MAF.
Motion to grant final approval for the Richard and Elila Weaver.
Joe, don't be so quick on this. I'm, I am concerned about this property and the property owners. But with that, there is a reluctance in supporting their endeavors, so I would like to make the motion in approving this request for final approval into the MAF program.
Second?
Second.
Okay, one question. You're like family or something. Is this a conflict of interest, or are we okay with this?
Well, I don't think it's a conflict of interest. I think, you know, him being three, four generations older than I am, I think we're good to go. But, and that's not age abuse, but just saying.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Stanley Pennington property, 1378 Bachman Valley Road in Westminster, 20 and 1/2 acres, 52.7% qualifying soils. We are retiring five lot rights in District 1. This is where the Pennington farm lays in relation to other preserved properties, and today we're requesting final approval for the MAF program.
Motion to grant final approval for the Stanley Pennington property to participate in the MAF program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Nicholas and Brittany Osborne property. It's off of Manchester Road in Westminster, 18.5 acres, 85.2% qualifying soils. We're retiring four lot rights in District 3. This is where the farm lays in relation to other easements in the area, and today we're requesting final approval for the MAF program.
Commissioner, do you?
I move the Board of County Commissioners grant final approval for the Nicholas and Brittany Osborne property to participate in the MAF program.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed.
Thank you. Next, we have the Brandon and Katie Hochheiser property, 2625 Old Washington Road in Westminster, 60.14 acres, 58.8% qualifying soils, and we're retiring four lot rights in District This is where the farm lays in relation to other preserved properties. This is able to stand alone because it's over 60 acres. Actually, with the state, it only has to be 50. But today, we're requesting final approval for the MAF program.
Commissioner, did you want to?
Yeah, sure. I move the Board of Commissioners grant final approval for the Brandon and Katie Hochheiser.
Hochheiser.
Hochheiser. My apologies, though. Property to participate in the MAF program.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Alyssa Jacobson, 4533 Cryer Schoolhouse Road in Manchester, 26.45 acres, 55% qualifying soils, and retiring one lot right. Everything you see there in the picture has all been cleaned up. This picture's a couple years old. It says application acceptance is dependent on the neighboring farm settling with the MAF program. The neighboring farm is there to the left, and actually, we've already ordered the check and sent it to the title company, so it will be, it will be settled very shortly. So that's how it's in the program, being less than 50 acres. So today, we request for final approval for the MAF program for Alyssa Jacobson property.
Motion to grant final approval for the Alyssa Jacobson property to participate in the MAF program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Quick question, if I might.
Sure.
Mr. Smith, so obviously, the purchase amounts are not yet available. Will we be getting a report back as to what those purchase prices are at some point?
Um.
Is that available?
It will be available.
Okay.
So they have to appraise these, and then they go to the Department of General Services at the state. They recommend a value to their board of trustees. Then the board of trustees votes on what value to accept, and then the offers will be extended to the landowners, probably sometime between February and April. And that's when we'll know when the offers are extended.
Okay, will that come back in any fashion before us, or could you at least supply us with that at some point?
We can let you know.
I'd just be curious to see. Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for your hard work with this, as always.
No problem.
Thank you. We now have a public hearing for clarifications to definitions in Chapter 158 regarding drug treatment facilities. Mr. Burke?
Good morning. Hannah Weber is here from our Department of Planning, and she is going to give you a brief summary of how we got here and what's being proposed.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. I am filling in for Mary Lane and Director Hine as they are at conferences today. So with that being said.
Ryan Solo.
Yes. Take it easy.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
If anyone wants to make public comment, their card's in the back.
And they should give them.
Please fill them out, and we'll check with Chris and see if we have anybody online to do it. But I just wanted to say that in case anybody needs to fill a card. Thank you, sorry.
No, you're fine. So the purpose of this amendment and some background. On June 29th, the Board of County Commissioners held a work session to go over the uses in the Agriculture and Conservation districts. There was some concern raised at this work session regarding the definitions pertaining to drug treatment facilities, which under federal law are included in definitions of nursing home and assisted living facilities. Because of this lack of clarity, the Board of County Commissioners decided to forward this amendment to the Planning Commission. They returned a favorable recommendation on the staff's proposal back to you all, and on September 7th, you voted to send this amendment to public hearing. So the actual amendment, we, the new language is in red. We will be adding a definition of drug treatment facility, a licensed facility that specializes in the evaluation and treatment of drug addiction, alcoholism, and associated disorders. The facility may provide residential treatment, partial hospital treatment, or outpatient treatment services. The facility may provide a treatment program for behavioral health services only if established and operated in accordance with applicable state laws for residential treatment programs. So that will be a completely new definition put in the definition section. And then we also are offering to change the assisted living facility definition by adding for the purposes of this chapter, assisted living facility may also mean a drug treatment facility. We will be clarifying that a daycare center does not include a drug treatment facility. We'll be adding to the nursing home definition for the purposes of this chapter, nursing home may also mean a drug treatment facility. And then again, clarifying the, a retreat facility does not include a drug treatment facility. So that's it for the amendment, if you have any questions.
Commissioners?
Is it, I understand that we're confronted with federal law about certain definitions. And then perhaps, Mr. Burke, maybe this is more a question for you. Could you go back to the slide with nursing homes and, that, thank you very much. So, again, I understand federal law says that, that, you know, drug treatment facility has to be included under these definitions. But is there a way to require, when somebody comes to apply for something, that they have to specific, they can't just come in and say, "I want to put in a nursing home," that they have to specifically say that drug treatment facility is where I'm getting at here? Like, they can't come in and say, "I'm building a nursing home," which is, again, in my mind, and I guess in the mind of common sense, distinct from a drug treatment facility. Like, I couldn't come in and say, "I want to put in a nursing home," but actually mean a drug treatment facility. Because I've, as I've argued in the past, you know, treating addiction is a lot different than handling Alzheimer's disease.
Well, you received a letter late last night that we're going to get you some advice on. They've cited some cases and some material that would make the argument that you're making, so we're going to review that and get back to you before, you know, the 10-day period is done.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I know we've had this discussion as well, that I'm curious to see the actual, the federal, the federal statute, the federal law. I want to make sure that I'm completely familiar with that. We're going to have a public hearing, so it's important for let people to speak, and we do enough talking up here, so I'll make it brief. But this is an important issue, regardless of what the federal government, the federal government, the state government, we can all agree. Sometimes they pass really bad laws. We all get that. But a law passed in this nature, including nursing homes and assisted living as drug treatment facilities shouldn't, shouldn't make us any less vigilant and any less intelligent on how we're dealing with this issue. Because after all, nursing homes are a conditional use in the ag. This is where this whole issue started. Conditional use, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a principal use, it's not an accessory use. If we're going to have conditional uses in the ag, it's my view that we need to define what those are. And words do have meanings, words do matter. And I think what we're simply doing is clarifying for the county, for everybody who lives in the county, particularly because, again, we are a rural county, which means there are residential neighborhoods that abut agricultural zoning. It just makes perfect sense for us to clarify these definitions, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't fear the fact that maybe there's a federal or state law that decides to combine different definitions. It still doesn't stop us from doing what's right. And I think what we're clear, we're just simply doing here is defining what a facility is. Again, particularly if it's a conditional use in the ag. And there's a particular case in the county that I think most of us are familiar with that went before the planning of the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the ruling was based strictly on definition, strictly on definition. So if that's how we expect our zoning administrator to take action and fulfill his or her duties, we owe it to them to provide the best accurate definitions we have. And if we're going to be ruling on really important cases like that, well, excuse me, the Board of Zoning Appeals rules on important cases like that, I just feel like we owe it to them and the county to just make sure we, you know, we have the right definitions for that. So, again, I'll, thank you.
Any other, any other comments from the Commissioners or questions?
Commissioner Rothstein, Commissioner Gordon, any, any more comments?
No, not at this time.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Then I guess first, Chris, do we have anybody on the phone to make public comment?
No, sir, we have no one on the line.
Okay.
The first public comment card I have is Alexandra Yotov. Let's go to the microphone.
You want to give it to?
Give those to me, please.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And please start out with your name and address, please.
It's on? Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alex Votov, oops, I apologize, from the Law Office of G. Macy Nelson. Do you want the address for the office or?
Sure.
600 Washington Avenue, Suite 202, Towson. Today, I'm representing 98 residents of Carroll County who have concerns about the proposed definitions here. And as Mr. Burke mentioned, I submitted a letter late last night, I apologize, going over some of the issues that we have, and also providing a list of all of my clients. I figured 98 is maybe too many to read with three minutes to speak. But generally, my clients are very supportive of creating a definition for drug treatment facilities because individuals suffering or dealing with substance abuse disorders deserve respect and also deserve to receive care, and the people providing that care deserve to have clarity about where that care is appropriate in the county. But my clients are very concerned about including drug treatment facilities in the definition of nursing homes and assisted living facilities for several reasons. The first is it's our understanding that federal law does not require those uses to be included in the same definition. And I'm happy to get into that more if you would like, but it's also provided in my letter. The second is that these uses are simply separate uses. Drug treatment facilities, I think as Commissioner Vigliotti mentioned, primarily focus on mental health services, whereas nursing homes and assisted living facilities primarily focus on physical health services. And then the state also treats these three uses as separate uses. They have different licensure requirements, they have different regulations under the state, under COMAR, and they also have different agencies within Department of Health that oversee and regulate these uses as well. oversee and regulate these uses as well. There's also a federal land use classification system used, I think primarily with the census, that recognizes these three uses as three separate uses. The last issue we have with this proposal to include drug treatment facilities in the definition of nursing homes and assisted living facilities is that it will create confusion going forward and will make it harder for this body to regulate these three uses. I think exactly as Mr. Vigliotti mentioned, or Commissioner Vigliotti, my apologies.
I'll just find, no worries.
If someone is proposing a conditional use application for a nursing home, do they have to explain that as a drug treatment facility? What if a nursing home is permitted somewhere and an assisted living facility is permitted only as a conditional use? Where does drug treatment facility fall into that category? So my clients urge that this body adopt drug treatment facility definition as it's drafted. We are very supportive of that. But instead of including it in the assisted living facility and nursing home use, carefully study where it should be allowed in the county, again, being careful not to violate the Federal Fair Housing Act, but then carefully consider where it should be allowed and add it as a separate use to the land use table, because we believe that's the most workable framework and also be the most effective at providing clarity to the people trying to create these uses and use them going forward. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I'm not supposed to ask any questions, but is this Buckhorn facility, is that currently under appeal?
Yes.
Is that...are these issues being raised in that case, or is that premature?
Um, yes.
Okay. And is there any light at the end of the tunnel as to when they'll decide that one?
We have briefs coming up. We haven't, we don't have oral arguments. Not every issue in that, I think, is addressed by this proposed amendment, but there are some overlap for sure on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Next.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Jay Gaither.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm Jay Gaither. I live at 1211 Buckhorn Road, Sykesville. And I was at the first meeting we had, and the room was full of these people that live on or around Buckhorn and this facility. It was a nursing home, as everybody knows, it's been sitting there for about a year now. And all of a sudden, Life Bridge comes in. Life Bridge is a monster, okay? They control most of the medical and facilities in Carroll County. I don't know how they got to be that big in Carroll County, but they are, and they're pushing this to be, you know, a drug rehab center. And while we definitely need drug rehab centers, everybody knows that, it's being legalized everywhere, so what do you do? You try to help people, okay? But this is a residential neighborhood, and all the peoples would not be here if they thought it was okay. We lived with Brenton Woods Nursing Home, I had relatives there, and I went up to see them, there might have been 10 or 12 cars in the parking lot, very quiet neighborhood. It wouldn't, this will change, period. Common sense is all I have, I don't have any legal abilities, but I have common sense to know that you just can't do this in a residential neighborhood. If you're going to do this, you're going to set a precedent for every nursing home in the county that says, "Okay, you can be a drug rehab center now," and everything, nursing homes will cease to exist basically because there's more money in drug treatment facilities. Everybody knows that, they're subsidized, so that's what's going to happen, you're setting a precedent if you let this happen. This is a residential neighborhood, it should stay that way. Otherwise, you'd make the whole county commercial, you know, but just say, everything goes, it's sort of like the solar panels in Mount Airy going to ruin a farm in the neighborhood. It's just like the proposed thing in Bonbins Valley where they're going to build a 10,000 square foot church cathedral, whatever, with a big dome in the middle of farming country. And if Carroll County okays all this by zoning, then we're in trouble, we really are. And the fact that we had this big meeting and all these people that live there, I like those people that are for this, to live where they proposed this, the neighborhood, the house next door is for sale now, and do they have to, in full disclosure, admit that this is under a proposal? I don't know. I'm not, like I say, a lawyer, but I know common sense tells me they're going to have a problem. And as far as the county proposing any of this stuff in zoning, we had one man come in, we had a big meeting, a bigger room than this, he came in and said, "I say the word convalescent means sure it's a drug treatment center, can be no problem." One person can overrule the people that live there and be affected by this. And I just think it's a sad state of affairs if all these things go through in the county, which everybody loves, is going to be broke, whatever you want to call it. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Patrick Danina.
I don't even know what time it is, but I'm going to go with good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name's Patrick Danina.
3 o'clock, can't you see?
Yeah. Time goes quickly. 1443 Buckhorn Road, Sykesville, Maryland. Apologize, I'm not a public speaker, my thoughts may be scattered. I just want to state for the record, former Army officer, former president of the Winfield Recreation Council. And I mention that because as the president of the executive board, when the groups within the recreation council or the sports programs had problems, I said to them, "Please work it out amongst yourselves, because by the time you come to me, I have to pick a winner and a loser." And I feel that's the position you're in right now, you're going to have to pick winners and losers. And I feel like what I'm about to share with you is kind of like a win-win for everybody, because I do want to publicly state, I 100% agree with our council, very thankful she was here today. I mentioned that I was an Army officer, because as a young lieutenant, I put my life on the line. I had dark hair at the time, I wasn't married, so I risked my life for our form of government. You know, we have an executive branch, we have a legislature, we have courts. And I just feel like in this particular situation, unelected bureaucrats decided that nursing homes are the same thing as drug treatment facilities? And then now they're playing catch-up, they're asking you to update the law to reflect what they decided. And I feel strongly, our position on this, with court precedents, states that they're not the same thing, that nursing homes and drug treatment facilities are not the same thing. So I frankly, let me check my time. I don't want to mention the man's full name, but his name was Brady, he's the same age as my 26-year-old son, and frankly, Brady went into a treatment facility, came out, and he's now passed, he's dead, he's overdosed. So we represent, we respect the fact that there are needs within the county for these facilities. The win-win to me is keep the uses separate in the ag zoning, and that's all that we're asking, not to deny them. And I have just a few more seconds left. Interesting court case here, Federal Appeals Court, by the way. The judge states, maybe for the record, I'll state the case here, was Get Back Up Inc., plaintiff versus City of Detroit defendant. And the interesting ruling here, which I feel is different than what the administrator found, the judge says, "Nursing homes differ from residential substance abuse service facilities in their impact on traditional zoning concerns and accordingly in their need for a conditional use application. Nursing home residents are often physically disabled and they rarely leave the premises, if ever." See Drug Abuse Prevention Center versus City of Kelso. As the district court observed, nursing homes are a uniquely sedate and unburdened some use, have relatively little impact on traditional zoning concerns like noise and traffic. So, to me, the drug treatment facility is a totally separate use, and that's my petition to you is to put the law to reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley Young.
My name is Shelley Young, and I am actually not with the Buckhorn Estates, I am actually with the Covilla and Fairfield. We came before you guys probably a little over a year ago, and we did the appeal process. Some of you guys are a little bit different now, but we actually are still concerned, I'm not going to lie, things have actually improved a little bit, but we are still concerned about the investors being able to come into the community and buy properties. We are appealing to you guys to be able to think about stopping this. We have multiple houses owned by the investors that work with Mulligan. It needs to stop. If houses have HOAs, they can stop them. We don't have HOAs in our communities. It needs to stop. We don't mind one or two, but when, within a quarter mile, we have four, five, we need protection. We need, as the county, there's other counties, Howard County, that you can have one, you can have two. This county has nothing to protect the homeowners. We have a house beside us that's going to go on the market, we don't know who's going to buy it. Every time a house pops up, we get worried, is the investor going to buy it? Mulligan, you can just look up and down Main Street, they have offices beside daycare centers, a big business. The trouble. I know what's going on. Does everybody else know what's going on? We need more protection as a community. It's going on in our backyards, and our community stood before everybody, asking for support. And I'm here again because most of the community has given up. Please, they're here because it's coming in bigger. The traffic is increased, you see the scooters, I know the cars that are coming in and bringing the drugs. We need protection. We heard them lying on the stand. We know what's going on, and if you allow it, it's going to get worse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last speaker, Barbara Knapp.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Barbara Knapp. I live at 1532 Buckhorn Road, five houses down from this proposed drug rehab. I've lived here for 30 years. I am very concerned about crime, about drugs. That is my basic point. Please, like this lady before me, we need our Commissioners to protect our neighborhoods. We have a family right next to this facility, immediately put their home up for sale, they have young children, it's under contract, we don't know who's bought it yet. Please consider if you would want this in your neighborhood. A nursing home is a total different aspect from a drug rehab facility, where people can come in, they may come in as a better choice to go to jail, and there's nothing to keep them from leaving, there's nothing to keep them from going out and coming to our homes and committing crimes. This is something every neighborhood in Carroll County must consider. So please, listen to us, your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, still no one on the phone?
No, sir.
Mr. Burke, could you just, for the public, state that this was advertised for...
Yes, we ran...
...just two weeks, and exactly what happens if we make the motion to close the public hearing, or the 10 days, and what can happen? Can they do more public comment or not? What happens next?
Yes, we did advertise this hearing on our website and in the Carroll County Times on September 14th and the 21st of September. Typically, what the board will do is leave the record open for an additional 10 days, which we can receive additional comments, phone calls, texts, emails regarding this matter. So the public speaking or public hearing portion will end today, but you can still take comments and letters, emails on the subject up until the day you decide to schedule it for possible consideration.
Do you want to say anything else?
Oh, no, I'm good, thank you.
Commissioners, anything else?
Well, I think I probably just, I guess, I don't know whether this is a question or a request, or more of just a thought, right? But I do find it concerning that, you know, non-residential individuals are purchasing residential units for what are conceivably non-residential purposes. And I don't know whether or not we have the capacity or we can determine the capacity where we can create some kind of, I don't know, community integrity ordinance that would prevent non-residential purchasing of residential property. I mean, I don't even know whether or not that's possible. But that, to me, that's certainly concerning that there would be, you know, investment into residential communities that is not residential. I'm not, again, I'm not sure whether that's feasible or whether or not it's something we need to research, but I'd certainly be interested in pursuing that because, you know, if we, you know, I take the point that if we start, you know, allowing residential areas to be utilized for non-residential purposes, it kind of undermines and ultimately defeats the point of having a residentially zoned area. Now, I could be off here, I could be totally wrong about this, but, you know, again, I think it's certainly an area of concern and something, I know it's separate from this we have at hand, but it's certainly something that I would like to look into in the coming weeks, because, you know, hearing this, it is a concern.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's ridiculous at all, and I think, again, this is a good first start with being honest with people in the county and making our regulations or ordinances reflect reality. I mean, that's what this is really about. I'm curious if, I mean, since so people are aware, we're by ordinance, we refer things to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they come back to us with their recommendations, that's what these are, we can decide to amend their recommendations or make any changes we'd like, and that's that. So I just want people here to understand that. I know if we, I would imagine if we kind of go off scope a little bit, that's probably another recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission at that point, and we're sort of in that cycle again, but as terms of what we've been given, we can amend it any way we'd like and...
Yeah, the subject of today was the definitions, the nursing homes. You don't have to go back to the Planning Commission with that if you decide to eliminate certain portions of that.
I just wanted people to be aware of that who are watching. I imagine there's probably a lot of people watching, and we've got people here that this process is moving forward in regard to these definitions and what they mean.
And I wonder if you can clarify, maybe, for the public and probably for me, okay, we're looking at definitions right now of facilities in agricultural and conservation zones. The recovery houses that were mentioned that are in residential communities are different than this, correct? Or they're...
Well, if we're talking about the use, then it's the use as a whole, where it's allowed in the county. So the one on Buckhorn, I believe, is in the agriculture zone, so I'm not aware of the one, the Mulligan, that the other woman was speaking of, but it would depend on where you would allow it in the county, and it's my understanding that Mr. Burke will look into the...
Well, those are considered residential treatment centers, up to, I think, eight, and that's certainly not what we're talking about in this ordinance.
Yes, they're two different things, in two different zoned areas, possibly.
Yeah, the treatment centers are in residentially zoned property, not ag.
I think we have one more speaker coming up as well, so, but...
Commissioner Rothstein, do you want to add something? So, we haven't closed the hearing, so we can have more public comment, and...
Sorry, that's all right, we got you.
I'll fill out the rest.
That's all right. But, I don't know, are we still waiting for Commissioner Rothstein? Are you, did you want to speak, sir? No? We'll give you more than three minutes. Fortunately, we all take up way more than three minutes, right?
I'm notorious for that.
Go ahead. Katie?
Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. I did not intend on speaking, but this is something that many of you know that I'm very passionate about. I do live in the neighborhood where we do have four Mulligans, so we're living homes. And while you were saying that you do not classify them as a nursing home, these are single-family homes. In my neighborhood, I have had seven families move out as a result of drug recovery students, individuals coming. I am not against recovery. I am against having it in my backyard where my children are no longer safe to play because they're worried about having drug paraphernalia found in their yards or when we go open our sheds and we found individuals who are sleeping in there or the prostitution that's happening in our neighborhoods. So the problem, we have been before the Board of zoning appeals, we did win our first hearing, they can go up and ask for allowances to go up to 12 individuals. These homes are three- and four-bedroom homes. Recovery does not happen when you're on top of each other. They are not monitored properly. They have testified in our hearings or in your hearings with the BZA that they go to groups once a week. This is not where you bring someone who is wearing a bracelet where they've just brought, been released from jail to recover into a neighborhood that does not have transportation for them to get places. And so this is something that my neighborhood and my neighbors have been fighting for the last year and a half in bringing this to the county's awareness. And poor Verbera got CC'd on 300 and some emails from my neighbors last year when we went to the BZA. We have fought this. And when Patrick, I reached out to Patrick when I heard that his neighborhood was dealing with it, and I do realize that this is an established nursing facility, but the definitions, which I am very happy to hear that you are looking at, absolutely need to be changed because there's a difference between a nursing facility where somebody is coming to visit their loved one who is receiving care as an elderly person or something like that, or our target home, which is also in our neighborhood, versus a drug treatment facility that is bringing people who are not invested in your community to be there. And if you look at the homes, residential homes, they will say that they care for them, but they don't take care of the trash. They don't care, which brings rodents. They do not take care of their lawns, which brings rodents and other things to them. We want people in our neighborhoods who are invested in our neighborhoods. There are not enough homes for sale to be able to bring people into our community who want to be here. Residential homes in neighborhoods do not belong being for people who are not invested in those communities.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a few more. I think it's Keith Frampton.
Good morning, I'm Keith Frampton. I live at 1401 Buckhorn Road, just a few doors down from the proposed nursing facility there. And I'd just like to say, let common sense rule here in this, please. It just, it just doesn't make sense that drug rehab place is the same thing as a nursing home. I mean, come on, let's use common sense. And I agree with our counsel on everything that she said, that just, please, let's start looking out for the county residents and, and, and just do what's right, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. George Lowe.
Yes, my name's George Lowe, 1304 Buckhorn Road, Sykesville, Maryland. Live just directly up, 500 yards up the street from this proposed drug treatment center. And I just want to let it be known that I stand, I won't go into the same thing that's already been stated, but I stand with my neighbors. I, that's, I'm totally opposed to it. That's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Denise Lowe.
Good morning, my name is Denise Lowe. I live at 1304 Buckhorn Road. I just want to say that I agree with everything that has been said. I live up the street from the facility, and I really think that it needs to be in a commercial area and not a residential area. And I just agree with everybody, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Robert Weckeser. Did I pronounce that correctly?
I'm Rob Weckeser. I'm at 1507 Buckhorn Road. When it was a nursing home, my daughter actually worked there. And it was a nice, quiet place. You bring these drug rehabs in there, and we don't know whether they're going to be coming from other counties, even Baltimore City. I moved the hell out of Baltimore City because of the way things are and have become down there. I came out here to Carroll County damn near 30 years ago. And this is ridiculous that we're even fighting over the difference between a drug rehab and a nursing home. I mean, come on, people. Everybody knows there's a difference. And if you go and put this in law on paper, you're going to open this county up to Baltimore. Why don't you just say, hey, we're going to give you free rides out here, too? I mean, that's what's going to happen. The judges down there are going to give these guys the opportunity to go to a drug rehab instead of jail. And we've already discussed the fact that these doors aren't going to be locked. So they're going to get out and go into jail, come out here to Carroll County, and just walk right through our neighborhood, right through our county. That's all. And absolutely, you need to listen to our counsel, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Steve Shiloh.
All right, Commissioners, Steve Shiloh, 1433 Buckhorn Road. I agree with, with our neighbors. Drug treatment should not be placed in our quiet, nice neighborhood. As somebody who commented, common sense says the drug treatment center is not a nursing home, and it, and it certainly isn't. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me if I butcher your first name, I think it's Liza Lepo, Lisa, okay.
Hi, I'm Lisa Lepo, 5161 Frieder Road, just around the corner, next street over, Sykesville. And I just wanted to say that I support everything that our legal counsel has said here today and appreciate the fact that she's here to represent us, but I agree with everything she said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last one I have now is Jessica Brenna.
Hi, I'm Jessica Brennan. I live at 5238 Stone Bridge Way, so I'm around the corner. One thing that wasn't mentioned here yet is that we are within walking distance of a high school and an elementary school. So my son, who's 17, walks home from school almost every day, and he passes this facility on his way. So, and we have young children on our court who play every day out in the court, several families whose children are out there every single day, and we're concerned about individuals coming down our street and exposing our children to drugs, so, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioners, any other comments, questions? I need a motion to bring the public hearing to a close and keep the record open for a period of 10 days from today.
So move second.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on what I was saying earlier, you know, I think that there are some other outs, beyond the pure definitions of things, there are other outstanding issues that I think that we need to look at. Taking the point about, you know, certain classifications or whether somebody decides they want to do a nursing home or presented as a nursing home but not really intended to be a nursing home. And I think that there are, I mean, I don't know, is that something that we need to send to planning to look at? Is that something that we should start developing ourselves and then pass on? And again, of course, the other issue that I have is the concerns about non-residential investment in residential areas. That's, yeah.
I, I agree. I mean, it, we're not, I mean, unless you were deaf or just don't care, you heard what people had to say today. So I think we're all in receipt mode on that one. I hope, at least I hope we are. But I, I think, I see your point. I think this is, again, I've always felt this was something that was needed, and, and I think there's other issues, obviously, in ag in terms of what we're doing and not to restrict anybody's rights, but I think this is probably the best first step if we can all come to some sort of agreement on this issue. I think I've been fairly stated in how I feel. But going forward, I think you make a good point because, again, we are talking about a lot of conditional uses, which are not approved or accessory uses. These are conditional uses. So I think we have every right to take a harder look at that going forward.
And I think we have a couple of different issues because ag land is one issue and what we can and cannot do there, but also I think we need to look at residential and what we can and cannot do there. And I appreciate the letter and the comments, and we need to check into what we legally can and cannot do also.
Yeah, I think maybe it makes sense to start there and then, then we move on to, depending on those answers, then we move on to other things. Does that make sense?
Okay, so the public hearing's closed?
Record's open for 10 days.
And, and, yeah, we're, we're into admin open. Does anybody have any other topic they'd like to bring up?
Did you vote on the motion?
Say again?
You did vote on the motion, right?
Yes.
I couldn't remember for sure.
Yeah, we voted and then we kept discussing.
Yeah, that's my fault.
No, no, no.
I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to not have to vote.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Officially, the hearing's closed.
Okay.
And thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And we, we listened to every one of you, and they have 10 more days to send something in writing or keep contacting us.
I have a question. Has the Planning Commission made a decision or is that still...
Done. So, so I, the request is a plan, so that, if I understand your question, that, that portion's been done. As a board, we, when we want to make changes to the ordinances, we are by ordinance, by law, we send this to Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendation to changes. We're looking at their recommendations right now. We may or not agree with them.
So it's not finalized?
No, no, it's not final. And you guys could tweak what you've given us already if public comment makes that happen.
It's completely up to your discretion.
Yes, but it is up to the Board of County Commissioners.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Commissioners, any other comments, discussion?
Nope, not today, sir.
I hope I answered it. It's confusing. You know, it gets confusing.
We're, Roberta, we're...
Wait for Wanda. Wait for Wanda for a minute, I guess.
Yeah, we need Wanda.
Yeah, just give her a second. She's right there at the door.
We're still with him.
I've been there for almost 40 years, next year. Yeah, to me, common sense says this is crazy.
Well, thanks for saying hi. I like you doing so well.
Good morning, Wanda, how are you?
Good morning, Wanda.
Good morning.
And I retired back in 2004. I love the people. Things from the '70s, I'm retired, they changed so much. It used to be fun.
It's good seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no other discussion items. We'll go through the schedule next week. There's a grand, Monday, nothing. Tuesday, a grand opening at Dill Dinkers Pickleball in Finksburg, and it says I'm going. Are you going?
I may show up. I haven't decided yet.
I didn't think you had the option.
You never know.
Are either of you gentlemen going to be wearing suits when you play pickleball?
No. I leave that to you, Commissioner Vigliotti.
Wednesday, October 4th, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Commissioner Gordon. Thursday, October 5th, closed admin at 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., Priority Carroll Fire Prevention Week. Item one, consideration, I'm sorry, consideration of bond authorization resolution. Item two, request for a public hearing, Babylon Road. Item three, truck restrictions, Brown Road. Item four, Westminster area sidewalk improvements. Item five, construction services for Union Mills Homestead Grist Mill. Item six, approval to purchase repair vehicle and track loader, repair to the track loader. Item seven, household hazardous waste events. Item eight, approval to purchase two life pack monitor defibrillators. And that evening, the Carroll County Land Trust annual meeting that was mentioned earlier and shows Commissioners Gordon, Kyler, and Vigliotti. Friday, October 6th, open. Saturday, October 7th, Westminster Fire Department annual parade and open house, Commissioners Gordon and Vigliotti. And 12:00 p.m., the ribbon cutting for Maryland Print House, which that's a reschedule from last weekend because of the weather, and I am going to that. Anything else, week one?
Just the next page. Commissioner Garin has the podcast, Commissioner, on the back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, yep, podcast. Week two, Monday, October 9th, offices closing in observance of Columbus Day. On Tuesday, October 10th, Carroll County Farm Bureau annual banquet, Commissioner Gordon, and I'm also going.
And put me down for that as well, please.
7:00 p.m., Ag Center Board meeting. Commissioner Kyler. Isn't that typically Commissioner Ralstein?
Yeah.
If you'd like to attend, go ahead.
No, 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 it's, it's, that's, I don't, I do not want to interfere with your schedule.
Actually, what, what day is that?
Tuesday, October 10th.
That's probably because you'll be out of town.
Yeah, I'm going to be at the BMC. I'll be in Minneapolis.
So, so I have to attend?
Well, you don't have to. It is a choice that you can make.
I will, I will attend. Wednesday, October 11th, Farm Museum Board meeting, Commissioner Vigliotti, Board of Ed, our joint meeting with them, and we have all of us there. 4:00 p.m., Habitat for Humanity at Pub Dog Brewing Company, and it says Commissioner 5:00 p.m. is the Board of Ed meeting. Do we have anybody that wants to attend that?
I'll look at my schedule, but I mean, if we're meeting them, with them at 1 o'clock, then...
Yeah, I, I personally think it's fine. I think it's a great option that we can attend their meetings. I don't think it's a requirement, and, and, you know, I think we have and will probably continue to do, but no offense to the Board of Ed, but do we really want to see him like three times that day?
If you like him, you don't like him that much, though.
Thursday, October 12th, Commissioner Ralstein will be on a trip. 8:00 a.m., Chamber of Commerce annual meeting, which is a great, I don't know if anybody else is attending at IM. I love hearing him talk. He, he does economy with humor and normally a theme. He'll do, I seen him do James Bond, he's done a couple of other themes. He's, he's a lot of fun.
Sports themes, yeah, he's funny.
Wanda, please put me down tentatively for that.
Okay.
Open, open session at 10:30 because of the breakfast. Economic Development Work Week proclamation, Residents Rights Month proclamation. Item one, approval to submit application acceptance of the award Community Development Block Grant. Item two, public comment. Oh, and, and, we're not getting much public comment, but every item can have public comment. Bid approval and contract award Carroll County housing study. Friday, open house at the Tracy Building, I am attending. My understa- I am attending. My understanding is we're all invited. That's a, Friday's by invitation only, and Saturday they're having a public open house. Saturday, October 14th, 11:00 a.m. is a walk in the park at Leister's Park. And I need to double check, but since it's in my district, I'd like to go to that. I went last year. And we don't, do we try to get a Commissioner at each one of those or just up to us?
Totally up to the Board, yeah. I mean, I'm sure people would like it if you did.
And Commissioner Ralstein, if he's back in town, he has a podcast.
And I'm looking forward to it.
Good. Any other things for the good of the county?
No, sir.
A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned.